Six o'clock, we'll call our meeting to order. We need to begin to acknowledge that we are in Muckamaki, the traditional ancestral territory of the Muckamaki people. We would also like to acknowledge that the people of African descent have been in Nova Scotia for over four hundred years and we honor and offer gratitude to those ancestors of African descent who came before us to this land. Uh, we have an agenda in front of us that we're circulating. Are there any additions, additions to that agenda? Motion to approve the agenda.
What will we be having in camera this evening?
Yeah.
Turn it over on the back.
There you go. Yeah, so that's fine, we'll be in there.
Okay, very well. I have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by my councillor. But all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Uh, I'd like to ask if anyone has any conflicts to declare on any of the subjects that we are speaking of this evening? All right, here is it. Okay, number one. Uh, delegations and presentations we had none this evening. We'll move next to the minutes of the previous meeting from July the twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. We're in the package circulated. Anybody has any comments on those minutes? I'll make a request for a consensus to approve those minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? We have consensus on the minutes. Uh, business arising from the minutes. Uh, I think we can probably deal with these together. They were all saying later that I wanted Lobster Bash to work for early in Scarlet Days. Um, that was to do with the setup times for vendors. Uh, I know Scarlet Days was very appreciative because they had struggled trying to wrangle the vendors that have them. Um, I think Leslie just had some correspondence from one of them.
Yeah.
So it'll probably come up again later. I guess that was just information, Leslie, yes? We don't have to do anything about that.
Yeah, we were just, we had a request for us to do that.
Okay, we'll move on to staff reports. And we are... Did Matty go? Oh, Matty didn't, okay. He dropped off new, uh, new group of figures for us. I hope everybody got that one. The new series, just so it's a little bit more detailed. And if there's any discussion on that financial report, I'm going to entertain that. I'll take a minute to consult the new one he dropped off. Nothing sort of stands out.
One thing I'll ask, just ask the C A O. There's quite a few projects on here that we've done nothing on so far. Are there any that we're not under the scene in, um, uh, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year? Um, I don't know, um, I know we're, we're in August already, so not sure if, uh, we'll get around all of these or are they still likely to be completed before the year's end?
Um, so, some of the ones, like the fire, fire departments requests, some of them will probably take place.
Okay.
Um, sometimes they're, you know, they take a little while to actually get those underway. Um, the, uh, storm to a racket road at Larches. I'm not sure whether we're gonna get, uh, that one done this year. We need to have a easement. I draft, I have an easement document drafted and give it to the company and, uh, basically have had no response. That's been over a year ago.
Okay.
So, um... Some of this, I can't really talk or... Transfer station dumpster pit and wells, that's, that will be done. That's the work that needs to be done. We didn't speak on that.
Okay.
And, uh, some of the upgrades on Target Park. Some of that could very well be done. The gazebo.
Okay. No, I was just curious. I know there's three sidewalk projects on there as well. I don't believe any of them started yet, so I'm wondering if those are your push-ups.
Um, I know the clothing road, more side, sidewalk, but you haven't gone to Tender, I do know that we have not.
Okay.
It's a little bit weird.
Uh, thank you Chair. Um, as, uh, C A O just mentioned, the gazebo, I thought we had our gazebo's where the budget was twenty four thousand there. We're doing something with our own gazebo's.
Yeah, we are, but they haven't got it too. We have it.
Okay.
This will take these to approve. If we could look at the staff report, uh, just in rents. I have a question, maybe Tom can answer. One ten Montague Road, the area tourist association, no rent paid there. Uh, do we know what their plans are? Are they going to use the building or not, or?
I sent them their, their lease. I took the, I increased the, the rent as per, um, last year grant, which was to increase the rent. Rent was six hundred dollars a month and increase what the cost of living. That's what was every, every year, which should keep up with our any costs related to that building. Um, so it was sent to them last week. I haven't, I haven't heard anything back, which is a little odd because unless, uh, put away, unless carried to land, you know. But, uh, I haven't received.
Excuse me, have they used the building at all this year? We don't?
Um, I think, yeah. I think so, uh, extensively we've used it. I don't know, I didn't know that, uh, that it was there once in a while in town, so.
There's nothing, there's no quit, there's no... You didn't know anybody was there.
Yeah. Yeah. So, anyway, it's only gonna, I mean, I've got another proposal for that building and nobody ran with the council. So, um, it's one for this year, that's next, starting next year.
I think the, uh, market has been using it a little bit.
Yeah, the market probably has used it for most, right? For the, for the, basically for the washrooms, right? Because they need the washrooms or the vendors themselves as opposed to just for the public. And, uh, so, yeah.
Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, Tom, while we're discussing your own sidewalks here, the Water Street, Sydney to sixty eight Water Street, has any investigation been done on that yet at all? Do we know when, when we're gonna look at the work?
I, we were right down here, right? Uh, I haven't given an update from, from the Public Works Director at this point on.
Man?
Yeah. But I, I think we're purposely waiting until, at least after War Rad.
That's good.
Fall, fall, because there's no...
No sense in digging it up now, that's right.
That's sort of the, the last that I heard. That's sort of what they were looking at.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Go ahead councillor.
Thank you Chair. I'm just wondering about the new regulations for trails and we have the trail upgrades stuff going on this year. Doesn't look like it's anytime soon, we'll be getting that, uh, maybe end of October, possibly, but October fifteenth right now is the last seen trail. I know that was what, what are we thinking about that?
Trail upgrade, we still don't know yet, so.
Yeah, well, we have, that, that project, you get a grant for that. So money, there is a certain amount of money, but we have to work, work with the A T V club, right? They, they actually had to be the ones to apply for it because the nest valley or the town couldn't apply. So they, they've applied for it and so we're, we're working in conjunction. But now with the, with the trail being closed, we ended up working on the trail, but we're getting ready.
So the signs that they put up, is that part of that one too? Or was that something previous?
It's some...
They had signs for direction of the trail and the elements?
Yeah, that's, uh, that was from an earlier grant. But it wasn't from this grant. Usually get one almost every year. Just small grants and not large, but it all helps.
I see that, uh, August the twenty sixth and twenty seventh, the accounting system will be down. So the public, uh, will be able to pay the bills in a little two days while they do the training.
Yeah, so basically, basically, uh, we get advertised and actually it will be from the twenty fifth at noon, uh, because he did give up the, since he put that in the report that, uh, that'll be starting about noon in the morning, twenty fifth. So we're gonna close the five next department. Also, all five next staff and plus, yeah, the software is all taking place. So they all need to take part in the training, so.
And ten Carlton Street's been added to the town's insurance.
Yeah.
Is there any financial reports, are there any other questions on those? Nothing? All right, move on to the Director of Public Works report. It's in the package. I'd just like to personally thank our Director of Public Works, the Water Commission, that good tour of the well fields. Uh, it was quite timely to see, uh, how lucky we are to have gravity on our side and not have to pay the pumping all that long. Really works out in our favor. And the foresight of our town forebearers who actually purchased the land in Nantassal Lake. I have one question with them though. I, I often wonder, just because I grew up in the area, what would it take if something happened to the wells to reconnect to Nantassal Lake? And they actually showed us these events. It's because Department of Environment regulations, they physically had to sever the connection. And he said, couple of hours into it, well, there's a piece of pipe you could put it back and we could switch over. So he said, this is possible. So it's kind of neat too. Yeah. Anything else there in the Director of Public Works report?
I'd just like to, it's something if I could, you say the big things. If we have to use Nantassal Lake, then you'd be on an automatic boil order because it wouldn't be treated. Uh, and surface water is not well watered, so it needs to be treated before it gets watered. So, and it would be an automatic, if you had water, it would be potable water.
Yeah. Tom? We're lucky too that we have an abundance of water to, to, to drink. It's quite needed. There was a couple of repairs that we did, Tom, this week. Bird Street and Montague Road, they just, small breaks that we had to fix up.
Yeah.
Saw the notifications, but... I have to say that the system for Learnable has really been helpful just keeping people aware of what's going on. Working out quite well. How do you find it, Leslie, trying to interface with it? Is it easy?
Yeah, it's pretty good. I even did it from home on Saturday morning when Tom called and said, can you put it up for, for home? It's no problem.
Testing all came back now for call form two. That's all he said. Or which? I do have a question, just because someone from the market asked about it. Why are we watering around along Admiral's Walk with the grass being dead and all? All the business sort of make it wet though?
It was an attempt to try to keep it from totally being dead, right? Probably bad timing, right? Should have done it a couple days before the, before Friday, but...
Re-organization?
Yeah. So, anyway, but the re, reason for it was, it's the strip, the strip between the sidewalk and the street is the worst, right? That's the one, that's unfortunately one that mainly was the most too. So it's been getting a lot of traffic with festivals and anything else. And it's probably, because it will be costly if we have to resaw it that whole area, so.
How did our saw make out on Mount Street? I haven't looked recently.
Um, I haven't, not by the, it could be truthful.
Now, I, I've been walking it and I think it's surviving, but I, I, I don't think you dare stop watering it because it's pretty brown.
Yeah. Because it's a lot of places, mistakes.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else there on the Director of Public Works report? Or any other questions? Tom might be able to answer for you? No? Okay, quite much done. Move on to the next one. Welcome to the special cost management. Protective services. Anything there?
I guess a lot of comments similar to what I did last month, just to say that, uh, it, it's good to see all the detail that, uh, Laura Lee puts in these and that she's out there for all the different little things that we might get calls and emails about. Oftentimes she's responded to it before, well, even had a chance, or I even had a chance to come and speak to her. So, um, because I think one of the dogs, someone had brought it to me, so she had already, already dealt with the situation and wanted to investigate it. And, uh, even with venue license at the same time, she stays right on top of making sure that people are following the rules that exist for everyone and, uh, does, does a good job of that. So just, just happy to see the detail she gives us while also that she's out there, um, working on these things.
Uh, has there been any update to ten Carlton Street, Tom? Still the same situation?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I mean, as far as the order is, uh, that was a potential order, then we'd be ordering ourselves to do all that work ourselves.
But it's been down, either for, for the revenue?
No.
Okay, no.
No, as far as, no, it has not been redeemed at this point.
Uh, dangerous and unsightly premises reports. It's the next one in our package. Few more lawns going than attended the normal, but I think that's, goes with the territory. She's on there too. Uh, removal of asbestos tiles has completed fifty three racket road. I know, I was talking to Ray about that. And he was waiting for that to begin because it has to be done with hazmat suits and he can't touch it until that's complete. So nice to see that it's actually moving along.
Yeah.
And I guess we'll move on to the Chief Administrators reports. Tom?
Okay. Under Development Officer, uh, there were no development permits issued from July. Uh, NS R A B planning appeal matter. Uh, there's nothing new to report. Development permit through the D B Fire Department. Application process has been delayed until fall. And development agreement application on eighty six Queen Street. Uh, Development Officer is in receipt of a development agreement application for a ten unit affordable residential building for homecoming individuals. The application was reviewed by the Development Officer and the plan consultant. And additional information was requested from the developer. As of the writing of this report, the additional information had not been received. Building inspection, there were two building permits issued on eighty one First Avenue for renovation of a single family dwelling in Five Shore Road, the repair to the single family dwelling. Fire inspections, there was one fire inspection conducted in July for ninety six, ninety eight Montague Road. It was a follow-up inspection and all efficiencies were effective. NS R A B fire inspection appeal, no update on this file. Fire Department, the Fire Department responded to ten calls in July for O M, O M sending, two life assists, one M V C, one investigating gas odor, one vehicle fire and one rubbish fire. So four calls in town and six of them in its power.
It might just be a, like a life assist, probably left assist.
Yeah, could be.
That's what he had, uh...
That's what he said.
Yeah. But he made a sentence.
Yeah. Visitor Information Center, total visitors, the main visitor center had one hundred thirty nine visitors. And the downtown ambassador program had two hundred and nine six visitors. Total foot traffic was fourteen hundred and thirty five visitors. Staff updates, we welcomed two student ambassadors to the team this month, Alexis and Gayton. Uh, they are serving as downtown ambassadors and engaging directly with visitors in key downtown areas and providing information, directions and local recommendations. Special displays and events, they're onside with Lobster Bash. It featured a lobster themed display in the back room of the visitor center. The display attracted interest and provided educational and promotional material related to the event and the local lobster industry. Notes, July showed strong engagement boosted by both our in-house efforts and the downtown outreach and the addition of our student ambassadors already having a positive impact on visitor experience and local visibility. Looking ahead is to continue promoting late summer events and having this color display. The Office of the C A O, King's Transit, is in the matter of the application of King's Transit for the amendment to its, uh, motor carrier license. A hearing is scheduled for Thursday, August twenty first, twenty twenty five, at ten thirty A M at the Town Hall. Uh, it's also important to note that the hearing may be switched to a virtual hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak at the hearing must notify the board by, by Thursday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty five. I just got a notification this afternoon that the hearing will be virtual. They won't be, not becoming, they're going to have a hearing. So, uh, there is, uh, you can attend using Go Do, like a Go Do meeting, webinar, Go Do webinar. And so I think they'll advertise the link. I did send it to all council earlier today. Under staffing, the administrative assistant receptionist started work on August fifth. She's undergone her training under the watchful eye of the Deputy C A O. The office space for the Deputy C A O is well underway and it is expected to be completed by next week. Upgrading of the accounting software and training of the finance staff is scheduled to take place the week of August twenty fifth. Therefore, the finance department will be closed from noon on Monday, August twenty fifth to end of day on August twenty seventh. The public, no payments will be received during that time other than the online banking payments or financial institutions.
Questions from C A O? Absolutely.
Uh, Tom, on the transit hearing, um, you're gonna have, you say you're gonna advertise the link for anyone who wants to watch that, the general public?
Apparently so. I would assume they're gonna advertise or do that. They said everybody that was associated with the, the link, but, uh...
So that'll be advertised on our website or?
Yeah, it could be, I guess, yeah, yeah.
Could you potentially put that out through Learnable as well? Uh, we've got a decent group of people who are following using that now. Might, might be the easiest way to actually get to...
A lot of people do have a lot of questions.
Yeah.
You think you see the process?
Yeah. Unfortunately, most of the people didn't contact the...
Yeah.
They contacted the board.
The hearing would be...
The hearing would have been here and they would have had standing to get up and have their say.
Yeah.
So, that's the unfortunate fact.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just a quick comment on that. I will say I actually talked to two of the folks who had, who had written things that, and that sort of caused this hearing to actually take place. And I did encourage them to write in again and request to actually speak. I don't know if either of them did, but, uh, but I did run into two of the people whose names I recognize that had originally sent letters. Uh, and then my, my question's actually about, um, one eighty six Queen. So, uh, assuming they get back to you with the information that, uh, that you requested, would the next step be for that to do with the Planning Advisory Committee?
Once that we get, yeah, it'll go with the P A C once we know that all the information is there.
Okay.
And, uh, because they're lacking some information, so we haven't even proceeded to, uh, do our due diligence yet until we know that we got the information that we need, right?
Okay, so, that's fair.
Yeah.
I'm sure there'll be questions over parking with that one because I'm looking at the backyard on, on Google Maps and, uh, kind of questioning the layout of, uh, where a ten unit building is gonna fit back there.
Yeah, they, uh, the, the, the site plan was, was there.
Okay.
The site plan was included. However, we did have some questions about the site plan, not especially the, the parking, but the, the closest to the, to the southern law line.
Okay.
Right? So, uh, they were gonna revamp, revamp that, so we expect there's gonna be a difference. And plus, they were supposed to explain, uh, the existing building that is on, on the site as to what, uh, what the plans were or that gonna continue to be, um, apartments as well. And, uh, so again, they, they did have, on, on the original site plan that they provided, that they had a parking.
Okay.
And it seemed to be, uh, have a good parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will entertain any councillor willing to give me a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve the report as presented.
Or, uh, a secondary?
Seconded?
Councillor, thank you. All those in favor of those reports? If I can say a line?
Aye.
Contrary? Ayes have, we have accepted those reports. Next is correspondence. Uh, a information letter from the Honorable John Hoare about being able to go to firefighting school. He follows him... About the emails that the fire fighting school, the foundation, curling report. And the withdrawal of funding from the provinces. This sort of will tie in unwillingly, nicely with our fall talk of the training center here, so. That would love to have a good one. It's good though that the provinces communicated their their findings to us. It's good relationship.
Might I suggest on that one that to potentially, you know, worthwhile for council to engage Jill before they return for their sessions in the fall? And talk about that because I I'm sure the fire hall's gonna reach out and have a discussion with the, um, whomever about it. But it might also be beneficial for us to have that conversation with her to make sure that she's fully in the loop, uh, when when she goes back up there. And has an idea that that might potentially, that discussion might potentially be taking place. Uh, and say that, you know, funding for a train facility that covers southwest Nova Scotia might be a great idea.
We have a growing list of things to talk about with that, Jill.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right. Any other questions about that? Okay, next piece of correspondence was invitation for the organization of Alexander McMoran. You have this church, I'm assuming that whatever to everyone in the council, but it looks like just a blanket. Invitation from Brian Butler, Chairman of the Board of Deputies. Looking for the date, uh, October the eighteenth. Calendar. And also some good news from Public Works as we finally enough got approval for our research grant. For our feasibility study for eighty percent maximum fifteen thousand dollars. Happy with that. Counselor Fox?
Yeah, that's nice to see that comes through. We, uh, we will put it to good use.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, uh, new business, draft cellphone usage policy. Something that staff put together in your package. Tom, are you looking for direction to send that to council or?
I guess basically it's, yeah, usually, uh, any policies, we usually, uh, this one came to committee the whole way. Uh, usually, now with their new law and policy, community will probably go to them as well. But basically, it's so that we get the notice before, uh, to cancel the policy being being changed by council. So that's what more counts, either this or the policy you committed, right? So just it's just a matter of timing to try to get this one in.
Have to do some research and it's kind of standard fare for many councils. They have similar policies. Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Counselor.
So I just found my own chair. You know, I I understand the cellphone thing. I mean, I can't fully say that we should ban it, like ridiculous, because I I have two young kids, I have one vehicle, my my wife works. I need to be reachable at all times. Like right now, she's at swimming lessons. My wife's working and my other kid's basically with my grandfather in the city. So I need I need to make sure she's getting home and stuff, but you know, I know that there's emergencies, obligations for other people as well. I would prefer to possibly more focus on just being respectful on the street more than just kind of watching it right now. I mean, I also do a lot of work on both of these at the same time in this room, so.
There's allowances for that though in the document for emergency.
I mean, I think it's more important to, if you have to take a call, that's fine, just just take it at the time, right? Just have sort of protocol, so we may as well.
Okay, we'll throw a motion to send that to council?
Counselor, is it sent to, you know, what a council?
Can't, because basically I brought this one to committee all just on timing, because I don't know when our next law and policy.
Clearly I was gonna do it for that part of the discussion. Uh, so I'll make that motion that we will, or take this to council.
Hope you weren't on your phone.
That should be my excuse. That's what I was gonna.
Second, all those in favor? Contrary to mine? Motion's here. Send that. And submissions of agenda items.
I guess, basically, um, it was discussed at the executive meeting. Uh, the agenda items for committee and council meetings. And so basically, in order to ensure that we can get the package done and and the timing matter and get get it actually out to council. We are suggesting, strongly suggesting that, um, the Thursday before the meeting at noon could be the cutoff date time for anybody to add any items. Because, um, if a council member has has a, uh, item for an agenda, then basically, uh, there should be some backup information that should go with it. And fairness to, uh, council members as to what what the agenda is about, right? So if we can, it just makes it easier on 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 s- on staff putting together the package and the timing matter. And, uh, so, as sometimes it's, you know, sometimes we're driving at three o'clock and people are still calling. One day it's stopped or it didn't, or some something comes in. So if we have a cutoff date and something important, urgent comes in, we can come in from the province or whatever, we can always add it. At the at the meeting, we need to add it or, you know, we could add it to the package after the initial package as well. That's the beauty of the, with the cloud, we can amend amend it right after Friday or Monday morning for a day. But if you'd like to not have to communicate on the day of the meeting, so.
The other thing with that is if something urgent came up this afternoon or an hour ago, we can always contact staff in the morning to deal with it, so. It doesn't have to wait another two weeks. It's just. The research and stuff, the topics, Thursday's kind of short too, but at least by Thursday, probably you can get some information on what of the items.
We talked about that too, that's one of the things we discussed, is if it was that urgent, then it would be a special council meeting.
Right.
Yeah, and I'll just say that when we talk about that executive, the Thursday date came up from me actually going to submit something to the municipality. And it was very cut and dry, in by Thursday or not on the agenda. And it kind of makes sense just to make sure that we have, uh, have those guidelines and it makes it a little easier for us when we're discussing things. I know the deputy mayor had said it it gives us that fairness for every council to be able to go in and look at an issue if we're discussing something. Especially if there might be a vote on it, uh, so that we've had time to prepare prior to potentially making a decision on anything.
Okay, uh, I guess just before we go on camera, I would just like to publicly say thank you to our protection fire services. For their dedicated assistance to other departments in bettering off the town and this valley in this terrible, horrible forest fire season. Which doesn't seem to have an end in sight yet. That being said, that's the end of our public segment. Thank you very much for coming this evening. A motion to go on camera?
Some motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjemment, very much.
No, 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 I'll second it.
Who gave the adjournment?
Give it to the mayor, I'll take the second on it.
Well, it's nice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.